This meeting for the Wincup Town Council for February 17th, 2015 is now called "Ride." This meeting is being recorded and may be televised live. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilor Mayo.
...................................................
The minutes for February 10th, 2015, is circulating. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council Boyajin, seconded by...
Excuse me. He's Council President.
Seconded by Vice President Mayo.
Council President?
Yes.
I'd like to not vote on that.
Right, we're gonna have Council Boncory, Council Verone, and Council Terri of State. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the public hearing, we have three public hearings tonight. The first one, to appropriate for the purpose of financing sidewalk improvements in the Cottage Hill surrounding area, Pico Beach surrounding area, including all costs incidental or related thereto. But to meet this appropriation of treasure, with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $650,000 and issue bonds and notes of the town under Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority but the treasure, that the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow and apply for any grants or rate available for the project or for the financing thereof. Grants and/or rate shall be expended to the project in addition to the amount appropriated and borrowed under this order. And that the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise such rights, titles, and easements as they may be necessary for such purpose, to abandon such rights, titles, and easements that are no longer required, and to expend all funds available for the project, but take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project. On the public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the motion? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak opposed to the motion? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving to the second public hearing. Anybody need four more bottles of water?
Got them.
The motion that the town council vote to approve the transfer of $150,000 from Fund 900, water meter upgrade project for the purpose of funding the Radio Read meters, MWR-A project, and the Water Enterprise Fund 902, but take any other action relative thereto. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the motion? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Hearing number three, that the town council appropriate from rink retained earnings the amount of $30,844,000 to fund the rink contract services 6725-544350 for the purpose of necessary repairs and maintenance of rink equipment, such as motors and compressors, but take any other, take any action relative thereto. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing, seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Public comment? Seeing none. Correspondents?
Please, before I...
Seeing none. Committee reports, economic development, Council Sampit.
We had our meeting tonight, present with Council Terri, Council Mayo, both sitting on the call. Council Calla, Council President Peter Gill, and I think that was it. We discussed the possibility for meters up at the Grover's Avenue parking lot relative to beach parking versus residence parking. We've decided and made the recommendation to continue that conversation for two weeks, the date to be announced, with options going forward.
Thank you. Before we move on to the finance committee, could we move back to the roll call, please?
Council Calla, present. Council Sampit?
Yes.
Council Boncory?
Here.
Council Verone?
Present.
Council Terri?
Yeah.
Council Boyajin?
Here.
Council Dovento?
Present.
Vice President Mayo?
Yeah.
President Gill?
Present. Thank you. Finance Committee, Council Dovento.
Finance Committee met tonight and discussed all the items that are listed. If anybody wants me to read them, I will, if not, I'll go over the highlights. The $650,000 appropriation for sidewalk improvements to Cottage Hill and Pico Beach was moved forward to the council with no recommendation. The transfer of $150,000 from the water meters, the transfer of 10, 9, 12, to close prior balances, appropriation of $30,844, rink retained earnings for contract services, transfer of $6,000 to spectral services, transfer of $10,000 from spectral services to town manager's contract settlement, transfer of $10,000 for Fund 964 capitalization to fund a special article for Fort Bank Tendecap Playground, transfer of $24,000 from town council reserve to town manager contract services. I'll move forward with positive recommendations for the council.
Thank you. Rules and ordinance?
Rules and ordinance has not met since our last meeting. Since then, we have received a lot of communications on the houseboat issue, including getting copies of the other towns, cities, and towns that do have some kind of houseboat regulation, including Robin South. So I'd like to thank Ms. Dolan for sending us those, that correspondence and those other bylaws. We will be meeting rules and ordinance on next Tuesday evening to address the issue. As you may recall back some months ago, we received a proposal to change the vehicle registration, the $5 vehicle registration fee from the town. We sent that to TSAC for recommendations. The recommendations from TSAC have come back to us this past week, and we will be meeting that Tuesday night on that issue of our request to change the resident paga ordinance.
Thank you, Council. While we're under rules and ordinance, I'd like to ask the rules and ordinance just to review and discuss for clarification Section 3 of the Charter, which refers to the executive authority and the relative authority and assignments between the councilors, the exec, the council president, and the town manager, and what their relative roles are. And then I'd like to bring it up as a, as a motion next week, just to sort of summarize what that is, as well as to summarize the public comment process. We've had a couple of questions on, on the public comment process and how we're handling it, and I'd like to just review the rules, and I'll give you the specific rules as to... It was Section 3 for the first one, and then I will email you the others.
Well, in our rules, we have laid out what public comment is.
Right, and it's very specific, but since the new open meeting law, I've been advised that there's been, we need to clarify, we don't need to change the rules specifically, but I just want to clarify in the public session next meeting what it is. Okay, so if we get, I'll just come and we'll discuss it, and... I would urge the councilors to, to take a look at Section 3, actually...
Of the Charter.
Yeah, of, of the Charter.
Oh.
Section 3, 1, Paragraph 1, Paragraph 2, and Paragraph 10. And then as far as the public comment, Rule 11B4, Rule 2B and C. And then in the Charter, Rule 26.
What was the number again?
The Charter talks to the fact that we have public comment and what is used by...
Talking about the second hearing.
The Charter, Chapter 26, CV, that's in the Charter.
Of course, we can't change the Charter.
No, 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 not, not to change it, just to clarify, that's all I wanted to do.
Is it Section 3, 1?
And then Section 3, 1 is the rules, the relative rules of the council president, the town manager, and the rest of the council. And then the other one on, on the public comment...
You detailed out some specific...
Paragraph 1, 2, and 10. They're numbered as paragraphs, or you have to comment. Okay, so if you guys would discuss that, and then I'll bring up a motion at the next meeting to clarify in, in council session, if rules and ordinances feel necessary. Okay? Thanks.
All right, where did I go? You had, you know, it was, it was seven o'clock next Tuesday.
Mr. Manager.
Good evening. I had the pleasure of driving almost every street in town today with Chief Flanagan and Chief Delante and Director Calla, and got a good eyeful of what this town is dealing with with regard to the snow, the snow removal efforts, and just the incredible effort that's being made both by the town and by, you know, residents to cope and deal with the massive amount of snow. You know, we, we certainly have done yeoman's work, and we all know that, but we're still very much challenged in, in many respects. And what I was left with was clearly, you know, a consensus opinion through those in the vehicle we were traveling in, that there are some streets that simply are not functioning the way they ought to function for public safety reasons. And that's a scary proposition. When you can't get a fire engine down a street, you're putting everybody in jeopardy on that street. When you, when you, when you're playing chicken with anyone that might be coming at the, around the other end of a street, and there's nowhere to go, that is extraordinarily stressful for both people, for both vehicles. And we ourselves encountered that a couple of times while we drove around the town. And I can only imagine if, you know, I were a senior citizen or someone who had some issues that, you know, faced with a challenge like that, you know, it, it is not only disarming, it's, it's entirely stress inducing. And so that coupled with the public safety concerns that were expressed to me by the fire chief principally and the, and the police chief regarding the need to ensure that we have just reasonable access to be able to reach in, within our neighborhoods with, with our public safety equipment. It, it's necessary that we adopt a temporary order. And so tonight, and I've emailed this to the council, I am asking that the council consider, and before I get to that point, I think Council President raises a good question about declarations of emergency, all right? We have it referenced in our Charter, but it's not well defined, and it ought to be more broadly defined and with more criteria so that those, when we are encumbered with a, with a major incident, we can act responsibly and effectively. There's, there's brief reference in the Charter to the ability of the president to, of the council, to declare, you know, or to conclude that there's an emergency and that emergency matters exist and that, and that we should, you know, follow whatever safety precautions are necessary without having to call the council, because we would be outside the scope of open meeting law. For example, we couldn't post the meeting, we couldn't, you know, there are, it's difficult to square some of your other responsibilities as a open legislative body and an emergency event, okay? So that needs to be more precisely spelled out in the Charter. But what we do have, and what it does say, is that the council president can determine and define when an emergency exists. And so under that, you know, bit of a opening in the Charter, we're exploring here the idea that the council consider to provide consent to a directive that's coming from myself together with the public safety team to create a one-way designations for a dozen streets that at the moment are two-way streets, and they simply are not functioning as two-way streets, and in fact, they're putting people at risk. And we don't foresee in the immediate future that the condition of those streets are gonna substantially change. This is not to impose something on, an undue burden on people. This is to give people some sense of how to cope and how to deal with their, their conditions, excuse me, and give them some direction. And we can implement this by instituting some signage tomorrow, and we have the capacities already to do this. We've explored what resources we need to implement it. And we've driven around the town a couple of times today confirming that these are the streets that need to be, we, we need to be mindful of in terms of one lane, one lane travel at the moment. So we need to make them directionally appropriate. And so we have a list here, and you can read the list, but I wanted to get your sense of if this is an appropriate thing to do. My public safety team seems to think so. It would be a temporary order that would only go into existence until and when we could determine whether or not we can address the particular needs of a particular street, and then pull that, that, that order back on a street-by-street basis. And this gives us a sense that people will be able to pass, you know, without the challenge of having to, you know, potentially get stuck or, or, you know, have difficulty navigating these, these streets. And so, you know, I've personally driven down each one of these streets, they are challenging, to say the least, and they need to be, similar to what South Boston has done, and similar to what some other communities are doing, turning their two-way streets into one-way streets where one way is the best way directionally for, to keep public safety access open and available for these, for these streets. And so that's my comment on this issue. I'd be, you know, happy to hear your thoughts before we contemplate, you know, going forward with this. I know it's come up as a bit of a, you know, unforeseen matter for the council, but this is the condition that we have today that we're encountering, and we need to know and get some direction from you, how you feel about this.
If I could pause and ask the councils, if there's no objection, that we could have a motion that per hour of the town council, the following street should be designated one-way for a temporary period of time, temporary period of time until the public safety team determines that these streets can return to two-way travel. Could I have a motion? Council, we...
Two individuals. I have a problem with one of two of them. Which one of them?
Of the streets.
Yeah, of the streets. And, you know, if you're doing this as a council president, as an emergency situation, it can only last seven days according to the Charter.
Well, that's why I'm asking for a vote of the council.
Yeah.
So that it would be for a non-determined amount of time. But how about if we passed the motion?
I don't think it only goes seven days even if the council... That's why I think we may should do them separately rather than just all at once.
Okay, can we do this? Can we do a motion and then have discussion of the motion from any...
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
Motion.
Council Boyajin, seconded by Council Verone. That per hour of the town council, the following street should be designated as one-way for a temporary period of time until the public safety team determines that these streets can return to two-way. And we have a motion made and seconded, Council Boncory?
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion by taking out Putnam Street from Jefferson to Buchanan. And the only reason I want to take that street out is that is a major exit from the center that numerous people use. If that street were plowed sidewalk to sidewalk with no parking, it would be okay, I believe, for two cars to pass, but there was no stopping signs there, and it was plowed sidewalk to sidewalk. But that is a major ex, exit from the center.
Would, given, given this motion, could the, I believe, the way I'm reading the motion is that as time went on, each one of those streets could be removed individually. So if we said for a temporary period of time, we did all of these, then the chiefs could as, for example, Putnam Street became realistic to use, we could, under their discretion, that would be removed from the list. Am I making sense with that, Council?
That's correct, yeah.
Council? Because it was your point. Okay.
I see.
Council, oh, Jim, and those...
What's important for us, if I might ask for your indulgence at the moment, is to ask the police and fire chief to speak on specific streets when they're brought up, because you should be aware that a lot of thought's been brought to this.
Just let the chief speak first. Go ahead, chief.
Sure, I mean, the reason we made it outbound is because it is a carrier street out of the center. So we thought of that in the left off to Buchanan, and, and again, this street is, would be going onto our, our list of priorities, and when we get to it, restriction would then be removed. Obviously, from Jefferson to Pauline Street is passable in both directions, and that's where a lot of the traffic is necessary, certainly to, for the mall and also for the citizens bank and municipal lot there. So our goal was to immediately stop people heading into each other and then get to these streets as soon as possible to remove more snow. So our efforts have not stopped, but our priority list has to be major carrier streets, and we're, we're working on those major carrier streets tonight, all night long, you know, so we're not stopping, we're not going home, so it's just a temporary bend, and we felt that more, most traffic does leave the center in that direction, and that's why it's a one-way from Jefferson to Buchanan.
Okay, I, it is designated here.
Yeah.
Which way is the one ways?
It's from to.
It's also, yeah.
But chief, on this list, it says from Pauline to Buchanan, did you want Jefferson?
No, that was, yeah, that was Jefferson. We did update that, that list.
Yeah.
Jefferson.
Okay, so let's, so it's gonna say from Jefferson, and that's the way I'll read it when, when I read it? Does that work for you, Council Boncory?
Putnam from Jefferson to Buchanan.
Jefferson to Buchanan, originally, the list I have said Pauline to Buchanan.
Yeah, but there's an updated list.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
And that still would be outbound, Pauline to Buchanan, so it'll still be the outbound.
Gotcha, yep, it's okay, thank you. Council Boyajin?
So I, I think it's a good idea, and you're basically, what you're saying is there's a priority list, and as you address them, you'll remove them from it. What might help the public is, and there may already be this, but plan to put this somewhere on the web or whatever, that there'll be a priority, actually priority, not just the list. How, now, you're identifying signs that are gonna mark this, what, are they gonna be visible, are they just gonna be posted on the, on the polls, or...
They'll be in the snowbanks on the corners where traditional signs would go. Steve Calla bought eight-foot strapping to go into these snowbanks.
Okay.
Sign will be attached to that, those snowbanks, they won't be paper signs or cardboard signs, it'll be something durable that can withstand the weather, the wind, and the raining or snow if we were to get them. Let's hope we don't get any.
Sure.
If we were to get any, we would have a sign to withstand that as well.
No, and I think that it is an inconvenience, but I, you know, the only other thing would be maybe considering, chief, your lovely voice on the phone giving an all-call, that this is, you know, updated, go to this place, and, you know, and these are the specifics. I think it's a great idea.
We would, we would communicate on the town website, and the police department, Facebook, Twitter pages, all the popping Twitter pages and Facebook pages, as well as on our main site.
Council Verone?
On Facebook, Code Red was gonna go, directing people to that site, because the list would be too long to do a Code Red follow-on.
Council Verone?
My concern would primarily, I want, had the same concern Council Boncory did, was with respect to the Charter and the seven-day rule. And I have no problem with the concept at all, but I believe we would have to convene another meeting of the council within that seven-day period if we needed to extend it beyond a week.
I think, excuse me, excuse me, I think under an emergency proposal, correct me if
I'm wrong, I think under emergency proposal, it overrides the Charter. I mean, it's an emergency.
No.
No? Okay, then what we will do is, we will do it the way it's written, and if we need to, we will reconvene. I will schedule a continuation of this meeting for a week from tonight at seven o'clock, for that only, only for that item. Council Boyajin?
Okay, I, I just want to clarify that, I thought that was if the presidents made that declaration themselves versus the council. Is there any difference between that? I don't know.
Yes, there is, there is, and I think Paul Verone is correct on this, that the, the Charter in the forty-eight-hour window period, Charter entitles the council president to identify and define what emergency is, but then compels acting of the legislative body.
And it's still a seven days.
Seven days, you're right.
And then there's the seven-day period upon which, you know, you can continue the emergency for these to stay in place, but it, it, it does say that, so you would be correct.
Council Mayo? Council Calla?
I have a couple of streets too I wanted to discuss. On the, you have the Triton Ave, you have access from Bayview to Shirley, so they have to pick up Bayview off of Shirley and then go all the way around back to Shirley again.
Yeah, we, we left that the same fireworks pattern for July 3rd and 4th, so that's something that that neighborhood's too late with for the July 3rd and 4th, so we directed this plan based on that pattern. So I think we'd be flowing out to Shirley.
You know what it is, because Shirley is a two-way, you're gonna have people coming down Shirley.
That's correct.
So they won't be able to get to Triton, so...
Well, they can go up Siren.
They'll have to go up Siren.
Or they can go down Bayview.
Well, they have to go back to Bayview, yeah.
They can go down Bayview and come around.
And circulate.
Okay, okay, so that's how you want it, yeah.
Now, coming down Jefferson, you come down Jefferson, actually technically you could go either way.
Left or right.
Left or right, so that's clear, okay. It's just people coming out of the center.
Coming out the center, well, people coming to the bottom of Jefferson would have to go right, right, wouldn't go to the center.
Right, you know, it would go left.
Under this proposal, they wouldn't be able to make the left.
They can't pick up the clean.
They would make the left, okay.
Coming down Jefferson, you could take a left.
No, no, you can't.
You could take a left if it's going out.
A left if you go, I'm sorry, you'd be going...
You could take a left to Buchanan.
But it's a one-way.
Right.
But you can go right, too.
That's a one-way towards Buchanan.
Right.
That's correct, yes, left or right.
Vice President Mayo?
So let's just drift off for a second. Are we intending on cleaning up all of these?
That's a two-to-three-day agenda that I put in front of you. That's working in concert with this to attack a number of areas that clearly, you know, the height of the snow mounds and the, you know, certain areas that we can address effectively by doing a significant pushback to, and retain some two-way streets are on this list. Even though, you know, we drove around a number of streets that certainly, you know, would, would fall under the one-way category, given their status presently, some we can address, and we're gonna try to address those, particularly where we have shoulder to push snow. A lot of these areas here, there's nowhere to put the snow, and that's really the biggest challenge and what differentiates these two lists.
Council Mayo?
So that, that gets to me what the real question is, is at what point does the cost outweigh the fact that it's 32 days to springtime, and what expect, what expectation are we setting? Because I think that, you know, look, there is no place in eastern Massachusetts that's any better off than we are, you know? What happened, happened. We have a major catastrophe, and we have to set our expectations for what we can. Now, to me, places where you can't get your oil truck, where it's a danger to your firetruck, no ambulances, I can understand that. You're coming off some of the major streets, you know, the, the minor streets onto the Pleasant and the Main, the Corners, I can understand that, but, you know, there is an expectation, boys and girls, that we're gonna have to sit down on some of this expense-wise at one point in time. We were, we were 110 grand over before we got the figures last week, and my guess is we've seen another 100 go out the door, and, you know, the sun will come out tomorrow.
And, and to, through the council president, I completely agree with you, and that's why we felt it necessary to recognize what we can do and what we're going to be settled with, and having to deal with the fact that, you know, there are a number of areas that, you know, may not get the same treatment, and I hate to say that, because, you know, who wants to say that to anyone, that some of their streets, that's why, you know, on some of these two-way, these one-way designations, there are, there are a number of streets on here that, you know, should be on here, but there are too few homes, and they're, they're already living with their conditions pretty well. We haven't added, needed to add them here. We said some people are coping better than others, particularly where the streets are, you know, as the chief said, serving to, to collector's streets. We need to make sure that you can get ultimately to the street you need to get on, and that's what these streets, you know, call for. There are still a whole bucket full of other streets that are one-way, and people are going both ways on them, and they're shorter, narrower, less, you know, you know, less built out, and, you know, they're just gonna have to live with their conditions at the moment. But this is, this is really the best we do.
The chief, Chris.
Tonight, on our map, we have opened the snow field on the MWR-A property at 12:30 tonight to shorten the trucking routes as we punch our way through Charles and Moore. Those streets are totally unsaid, but, you know, we do have, as we talked about making these streets one-way, we have a probably less palatable secret weapon... these streets one-way, we have a probably less palatable secret weapon that we can roll out. And we can roll all these streets curb to curb. As much as this task is producing more work for public works and it took a little calibrating today, we can bring out Bertha tonight and we can roll these curbs stones curb to curb, but that generates a whole another discomfort to the people. This was a kinder approach, although it may not seem it. This is to assure public safety at the most kindest approach we can come up with.
Councilor President.
Councilor Terri has moved the question.
Can I, on my amendment that I had made, I don't know, consecutive.
It didn't get checked out.
I just wanted to address that before we move the question.
Sorry.
All right? Because the people who use Buchanan Street as an access to the center will now be forced to go up and use Fremont Street, which is like a really narrow street present time, or go all the way up to Winter Street, which it would be fine and then they could come back around to the center. But there's a major problem at the corner of Buchanan Street and Winter Street and that is that there is a twelve-foot-high corner that you cannot see either right or left coming out of there because I've done it like four times in the past, five times in the past week and I've almost had accidents, even inching out because you cannot see at all at those corners. Now you're gonna send a lot of traffic that way. So hopefully something can be done before we have a major accident.
Yeah, and we have also noticed that at the top of Jefferson, there needs to be some permanent as well if we're gonna push traffic up that direction.
If you're gonna push that kind of traffic.
It'll be tripping the area as well.
I don't know how they're gonna get down Fremont, but even worse, I don't know how they're gonna get over to.
Councilor Terri has moved the question, which ends debate. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question is moved. For our other town council, the following streets shall be designated one-way for a temporary period of time until, which will not exceed seven days, until a public safety team determines that these streets can return to two-way travel. Grover's Ave from Cliff to Sewell. Locust Street from Veterans Road to Revere Street. Elmont Street from Revere Street to Veterans Road. Cross Street from Shirley Street to Locust Street. Payne Street from Main Street to Wilshire Street. Court Road from Pleasant Street to Johnson Ave. Loring Road from Court Road to Circuit Road. Somerset Ave from Pleasant Street to Woodside Ave. Putnam Street from Jefferson Street to Buchanan Street. Woodside Ave from Pleasant Street to Dick Street. Bayview Ave from Shirley Street to Grandview. Grandview Ave from Bayview to Billows. Triton Ave from Bayview to Shirley. And so that motion has been made and seconded. The discussion has been completed. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tune in with us. And just as a side note, we will reconvene to, a week from tonight at 7:00 PM to.
And then at six, it's fine meeting gets at seven?
Six thirty.
It's only the one thing. So what, how about if we do six thirty?
Six forty-five?
So we will do six thirty on next Tuesday.
Six forty-six.
And that will be for the sole purpose of voting this motion.
Do we need a public hearing?
I would, we don't need a public hearing. I would say that we will reconvene to adjourn. I mean, either that or we have to post a whole new meeting. We can reconvene to adjust this list or adjourn. Wanna do it at six forty-five instead of six thirty?
Well, Mr. President, Mr. DeVanto, Councilor DeVanto.
Why don't we post as a separate meeting strictly because in case we don't need it, we don't have to meet to adjourn this?
And then you cancel it.
Then I can cancel it, okay. So would you post it as a separate meeting with just that one item on the agenda? Thank you, Councilor DeVanto. So the motion is passed. We will only, we will adjourn tonight as planned and we will only meet again if it's necessary to do so.
Continuing.
Not council, Mr. Manajess.
Continuing on. Thank you for that conversation. We are, as brought up in some of the conversation, we've prepared a list of action items for DPW over the next several days. We're deploying our Buffalo soldiers, if you will, from Buffalo to help us out for a time. But you're right, there will come a point where we have to say bye-bye to our friends from Buffalo, 'cause it's expensive to have that crew. But we're utilizing them, you know, around the clock and, you know, my public safety team has been monitoring their activity all the time. They're giving them chores to do, they stay focused and really it's been a remarkable effort, but still there's so much to be done. But I would say that, you know, so many other communities are without that added resource and they're really feeling it now. I've been having regional conversations with the area managers and mayors and it's unanimous how much of a deficit most communities are at in terms of adequate equipment and manpower to deal with the storm. Even Cambridge, even Brooklyn are struggling with this. They, only one other community had additional resource that they could redeploy elsewhere and that was Somerville, who's going to help us secure some salt out of Eastern with an eighteen-wheeler in the next couple of days. That's been a whole other challenge, just getting access to salt and keeping us, you know, with adequate salt supply. But we, you know, we spoke with the governor and lieutenant governor, they've heard, you know, our needs and they understand, you know, that they're trying to make every resource available. Of course, they have their own challenges to deal with, the MBTA and other, you know, transportation issues. So, you know, it's been, it's been tough. Meme's been stretched, they've attempted to give us some assistance. We did get four soldiers from National Guard who were very helpful to the town and to the local housing authority. They were out there today shoveling snow off one of our fire, the Beach Fire Station, right? So, you know, we're using every resource we can muster. We were able to help out the city of Revere over the last weekend. We deployed.
Four dump trucks were from twenty-four.
We called Buffalo and got them four dump trucks to help them out because they didn't have any resource. So, you know, it's really showed me and a number of managers how we need to have a regional approach to events like this and to have some larger capacity that we can access if and when it's needed. We don't budget for this sort of stuff, as you can see, you know, but when it happens, it hurts. It hurts badly and so we need to have some additional resources at the call. So all that kind of conversation is going on and I think it's gonna be fruitful. We'll all do a deep brief when this is all over and I hope that we'll develop some policies that the town of Winter will certainly be able to take advantage of. Just quickly, we've.
Could we just, because you were talking about regional stuff.
So I have no problem when they lock us in, but if they could put the sign back at Elliot Circle that says "The gate is closed," because what happens is, is you have to drive all the way down. And I talked to the park ranger, he said it wasn't them, he said it was the city of Revere. So if you're talking to these guys, we should get them, if this can set the car up at the Death Valley door there, they can move it back two hundred yards and, you know.
I have to say, we did find out after the fact and, you know, I think this was just a mistake on their part to a foremost. I don't think it was intentional. I know that the chief has had, expressed our concerns to Mayor Rizzo and to the DPW director there about that problem.
We're trying to get in any time it's ever closed in the future, it's gonna be, and this isn't etched in stone yet, but we assured the DCR that there will be no title action of it. What they do is once the weather bureau posts coastal flooding, they close, whether the wind's gonna blow north, it's gonna affect the Cape and Cape In, it closes. And again, I think they had egg on their face this time. And.
You're completely missing it. The judgment is whether they open and close it, that's harder than.
Notification. It's a notification.
And it's where we're notified, because you're not home when you get it, you come around the bended Elliot Circle, the next thing you know, you're driving down a black hole and everybody's stuck there. If they just moved the notification point back to Elliot Circle.
If you could request that, that'd be great.
And. I mean, Councilor. I know I made a call as well, Terry, I apologize for calling you on your vacation, but we should have some kind of a notification that when they are doing that and they're closing our access to Revere, that we should have someone from A-7 that will be at the intersection of Bennington Street, so, at Saratoga Street, so that we can get out of town or get back into town. Because the lines to try to get left back into town after you had to go through Beachmont and the traffic jam super, Beachmont was a nightmare, was an hour long at least. If we had some help from A-7, you know, moving the cars when they saw that long line, we'd have a little bit of relief.
And I think, you know, Lieutenant Perrin did re-judge A-7, they were unsuccessful, but they'd be happy to put detail us there as long as they can bill us, so who's paying for it and what their priorities is versus our priorities. So certainly, myself and Captain McCollum will revisit and try to work something else. It's mutually agreeable.
Thanks, Chief. Any further comment on the regional cooperate on?
I just wanted to back to Councilor DeVanto, I made a note about it, I bring it up. While they're out there, if they can open up, or Chiefs, or anybody, your entrance to landing, parking, I've been, I noticed that when I parked in there and come in and walk it out, the corners are getting very hot.
Okay, Mr. McKenna.
We were able to secure a health grant for fifteen thousand dollars for regional health initiatives. That's, I've talked about that before with the council, we were able to get that grant. So that's gonna really spark the regional health initiative with our public health department. And our FEMA response to additional information is due Friday. I'm just keeping you aware that we're still very much in the hunt there and our consultants will be preparing a final report that'll be filed before Friday. And should we satisfy that, you know, their requirements, you know, that bodes well for us. I can't say more than that at this point, but, you know, we're doing our due diligence on the issue in the first.
Is that the FEMA flood insurance?
Yes, that's the flood insurance.
Just, what is that actually, they're requesting information?
Yes, they responded to our initial reports that we needed more information or to be clear about.
And this goes back to the Woods Hole map?
That's correct.
Is we all set with our response? Do we have all?
Yes, we are and we're filing that prior to Friday and then stay tuned for how that works out.
Councilor Mayor.
So just for, for people in town that haven't pulled the trigger yet on flood insurance, what type of window before, potentially there would be a, some type of, you know, blowing in the wind about what's gonna happen?
Ninety days, I would imagine.
Ninety days from now. So if you haven't got your flood insurance now is the time to react to it as opposed to in ninety days.
Well, I'm hoping that in ninety days, we're gonna get good news, not bad, but.
But if you weren't a gambling man and you wanted to, or one and you wanted to cover yourself, now would be the time.
Did you have comments on the public buildings?
Yes, I did, I'm sorry. All in all, our public buildings are doing okay. There've been some heat issues in a few of them and EB Newton did have a water, water pipe break. So unfortunately, one of the history, the storage room, the roof came down there and they survived. It could've been a lot worse, but it could've been a lot worse. Thankfully, they had their stuff stored, most of it in plastic Tupperware bins, so great stuff. So it all fell on top of that, but there was a lot of moisture, we're cleaning it up, but we're, you know, we have to be mindful of, you know, the snow on roofs and the cold is infecting our pipes and I know the building inspector will be sending out a sort of clarif, you know, a notice to homeowners relative to some of these issues, those with flat roofs. Be mindful to address the snow load on the roofs and Chief, did you have any comments on that issue?
No, and the only thing is the weather forecast for Thursday night, again, a similar cold, similar wind chill. And as of coming over this week, we've had twenty-two buildings, both commercial and residential, burst pipes. So, you know, again, it will repeat itself again Monday. And all the snowbirds that are away, you know, the beats that comes, the water will eventually be running out there as well, so it takes its toll, these cold winds.
Yeah, that, I was gonna ask that question. That twenty-two, did you know about?
Twenty-two so far and the weather hasn't really warmed up.
Hasn't at all. Because I had just heard about three people, so I was discussing with Councilor, that these people are moving out, they're moving into hotels, you know, that half, because they got no heat and they can't get plumbers because it's just such a mess. Is there anything we can do to help these people? Should the MIC, can they open, should we be opening the shelves since there's no school all week anyway? Or can we get equipment that we can borrow to let our residents borrow, such as roof rigs, 'cause nobody can get them at a hardware store? Is, do we have any of that kind of equipment that we could lend to residents so that they could do their houses?
Let us caucus to find out if we have those resources available, how we might make them available.
And how bad have we been with this accident, as far as accidents because of these snow?
Yeah, we've had a few accidents, but there hasn't been a huge number of accidents. I think it's very important to reemphasize patience. People need to cooperate with each other. Usually we have complaints and more problems with three to six inches of snow than we do when we have with this amount of snow and we're grateful for that. I think people have to, we have to just remain vigilant, be cautious and edge out when you can't, don't fly out of these side streets and driveways, back into your driveway you can't see, heading out instead of backing out to the main streets and using some of those techniques to continue to keep the complaints low and accidents low. And Alogie sent over a flyer today and I know the police department put it up on their Facebook page and I'll make sure it's up on the town website tomorrow, but it's about cleaning your roof, how to clean your roof, what type of equipment to use, might not be advisable for a big person to get up on the roof like myself. Because putting that much more weight on it and then rake it off, it was very good advice, solid advice for the homeowner. So usually wanna make sure we mention that, that that flyer was very useful, at least to me, that I raked my roof off earlier. So I think it's worth mentioning, instead of telling you it's not there and falling in, is how to do it's very important as well.
We reached out to the Boy Scouts tomorrow, a lot of people have asked, requested help shoveling out their oil fields and that's been a problem around town as well. And there's not the snow shovels like years ago, you want your wash shovel. So we've had two or three older homeowners call at their forty, fifty-foot run to their oil field and shovel. We're trying to get some old members of people that are willing to take on those jobs.
Thanks, Chief. Councilor, too.
The thing that's really amazed me is the icicles on the houses and the danger that that imposes. I look, I get out of my couch and I look up and I'm like, oh my God, that's, that's a huge danger and I, you know, it doesn't look like it's warming up anytime soon, but that's gonna be an issue and I think really people have to be vigilant about that, as well as dry events and everything else. But, but the icicles are just amazing to look at them. Beautiful to look at, but very dangerous.
Councilor Cal.
Yes, Chief Lanigan, when you were saying that about the Boy Scouts, there's a lot of people, especially elderly people, that are looking for kids to shovel. My day, everybody went out and made, you know, money shoveling because that's what they did, we're too young. But you, you know, I have a gentleman next door that just had a heart attack, you know, he can't shovel and, you know, he said, gee, they used to come around or knock on the door, do you need anything shoveled? If you, if someone could provide a list of kids that are willing to do that, that'd be great.
Those were when kids actually needed money.
That's right.
We were definitely a shortage on kids actually out there shoveling. I think we have two names at the police station.
That's it.
That we can give out and certainly, if there's a desperate need, we'll try to reach out to other avenues, the fire department, the explor program, the Boy Scouts. So, you know, they do have a need to reach out to us, send me an email, send the chief an email, the town manager an email, we'll try to coordinate and help further.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Another possibility on that, Chief, might be the community service things that the high school kids have to earn. The only problem is they're not in school to inform them at this point due to the vacation.
And housing, tried to get some and we reached out to everyone we could reach out for housing and they got no response whatsoever, so then I'm like, God, I can't even help the housing, help you out.
Great, okay. Councilor Verone.
Just, I was gonna mention the same thing, but only the religious education programs. Those children need community service hours and they're certainly old enough to mend a shovel and I think a call to either religious education office would certainly help.
Yeah, we'll certainly reach out.
Thank you.
Question for the manager.
Yes.
And I think a call to either religious education office would certainly help.
Yeah, we'll certainly reach out to them.
Thank you.
Question from the manager, too. Someone had asked me, and I didn't know the proper response. Are we dumping snow into the water, into the ocean?
No, we're not.
We're not.
We're holding it as a card to play if and when we need it. But the issue for us is access to the, proper access to do it effectively. As we've discussed today, you know, we opened up Veterans Field to provide additional storage for snow. If we get more snow, you know, all bets are off. We may be dumping it. But the challenge for us is where and how to do it safely.
Well, I didn't know if you did it at the public landing or, you know, down on Court Road, that's narrow.
Yeah. The public landing is more of a challenge than people realize. Because once you put it into the water there, it doesn't move. It creates a kind of, more of a problem. And then extracting your truck out of it could be, could be difficult. So we have to take a very careful measure of where and how to do it effectively before we do it.
Counsel Delvento.
And one thing on the public landing, it's frozen, the whole bed's frozen over. The water, there's no tidal flow in there at all right now.
Okay, I just want to go back to the one-way streets for a quick minute. When I heard that, somebody suggested it on an email, and I thought it was an impossible dream. In South Boston, it seemed to be a relatively easy thing to do. You just took the opposite streets and put up a sign. But you guys were very creative today, getting out, figuring which ones needed to be done. And when you told me that it was going to be done, I didn't see how it could be. And I want to commend the three of you for getting together and doing that. Okay, on the, moving on to the school department update. The school department met with the Finance Commission last week, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. And there was some good dialogue back and forth. The, there are four, there are following high school students have artwork currently on exhibit in the 2015 Printmaking Exhibit, which is sponsored by the Mass Art Association. They are Liz Batero, Mark Shea, Kenna Godfrey, Abigail Lawrence, Cherah Powers, and Jonathan Richards. A nice recognition for these students and for our art department. We know that Winterfield is a sports community and athletic community, and that's the balance of the news this week from the schools, that the girls' basketball team have won the New England, Northeast Conference South. The Lady Bulldogs, Caroline McKinnon, joined the 100-point club this week, where she scored her 100th goal, tremendous accomplishment. Boys' hockey won both of their contests and now have an overall record of 12, 2, and 2. The high school swim team, three wins and five losses. Chris Vaccaro gymnastic team at the annual NEC placed first. And the boys' basketball beat Rivalry Vale last Sunday. So that's the good, good update from the school department.
But I, I...
Sure, go ahead.
I should have think about this, because you sit on the school committee. But I was, I was listening to their meeting, and they have an issue, like most schools, about running out of days.
Yes.
Okay. So one of the days that we have is June, is evacuation day. And I was thinking, if they captured evacuation day...
Okay. I forgot to mention that, that they are working on a plan.
Well, I would just like them to know that, wouldn't a Winterfield Education Day be a good idea? They could, they could do the Belle Isle March, they could do Walk Winter, they could do the Dean Winter, they could get, you know, the government, invite them up to town halls and use it as sort of a civics day, because I don't know that they get that. And it's beyond M-CAS, so I thought it'd be a good idea for them to think of, if they have an interest.
Thank you. Under old business, the first item is meet at parking, and that has been postponed. The next item, I believe the Finance Committee has reported out favorably on each one of those?
Yes. Actually, this was just moved to the council with no recommendation.
Okay.
So that would be a motion, and I'll make the motion, that $650,000 appropriated for the purpose of funding, financing sidewalk improvements in the Cottage Hill surrounding area, Pico Beach surrounding area, including all costs incidental, are related there to, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of town manager's office authorized to borrow $650,000 on your funds. On notice of the town on the Chapter 44 of general laws or any other enabling authority, that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager's authorized to borrow and apply for any grants or aids, rate available for the project, for the financing thereof, which grants, you know, patiently expended for the project. In addition to the amount appropriated and borrowed under this order, the town manager's authorized to acquire by purchase, evidence, or otherwise such rights titles easements, as may be necessary for such purpose to abandon such rights titles, any easements as they are no longer required to expend all funds available, the project will take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Coming from committee without a recommendation, do I have a second, Counsel?
I will second.
Seconded by Counsel Verone. Mr. McKenna, did you want to speak?
Yes, I respectfully asking that this be continued because of our experience with bond counsel. They require a favorable recommendation on this from committee to the, to the council as part of their due diligence. And so we've experienced this a couple of times now, where if you just sort of refer it out to council as a general matter and don't have a favorable recommendation, they, they give us trouble for that. So with all that being said, I would ask that this go back to the Finance Committee for a recommendation.
Okay. Motion to refer it back to Finance. Seconded... I'm sorry, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Boyajin. All those in favor of referring it back to Finance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus. Could you have that ready for us for the next meeting, Counsel? Counsel, still a possibility?
Does that have to be advertised?
No. No, it's just continue.
Let's continue.
Okay. Do you want me to read the motions, or do you want... These are all coming up.
I agree with him.
Okay.
I'm new in the order that I have them in.
Counsel, you got it.
Positive action from Finance Committee. So this is from committee, move the council vote to appropriate, approve the transfers of, from Fund 710, Workers Comp Special Revenue, $3,299.93. For Fund 713, our fund special revenue, $6,689. From Fund 659, Health Clinic Reimbursement Special Revenue, $926.28. For a total of $10,915.21. And those monies would go to Fund 585, Solar Energy Special Revenue, for $9.10. For Fund 519, Usicoverland Home Special Revenue, $9,979.83. And Health Medicaid Reimbursement Special Revenue, $926.28. For a total of $10,915.21. The purpose of closing prior year fund balance deficits, or take any other action relative there to...
Coming from Finance with a positive recommendation, no second required. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus. Thank you. Next.
From committee, we also have a public agenda this night. From committee, under the town council vote to appropriate the transfer of $150,000 from Fund 900, Water Meter Upgrade Project for the purpose of funding the radio read meters MWA project in the Water Enterprise Fund 902, but take any other action relative there to...
No second coming from committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus. Thank you. Counsel?
From committee, move that the town council appropriate from rent retained earnings the amounts of $30,844 to fund rent contract service, services account 6725544350, for the purpose of necessary to be as maintenance of rent equipment, such as motors and compressors, or take any action relative there to...
No second required from committee. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus. Thank you. Counsel?
We have a motion from committee to move that the town council vote to approve transfer $6,000 for inspectional services personnel account 01241515111002. Health Department personnel, 0151051511100. The purpose of funding departmental budgets through June 30th, 2015, or take any other action relative there to...
Coming from committee, no second required. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus. Thank you. Counsel?
Coming from committee, I move the town council vote to approve the transfer of $10,000 for inspectional services personnel, 0124151-511100, to town manager's contract settlements, 011125151109, for the purpose of funding contract settlements, or take any other action relative there to...
What was the amount on it?
$10,000.
$10,000. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus.
Motion from committee, this is going to require a voice vote, because it needs a majority. I move the town council transfer from Fund 964 Capital Stabilization, $10,000, to the General Fund Special Article to offset, to offset the Goldman Foot Bank's handicap playground project, or take any action relative there to...
Coming from committee, no second required. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel?
I would just like to ask that Council President to go back to the school committee and strongly urge them to match this $10,000 offer from the council.
Will do. They, they have discussed it, and I will bring it up again. Thank you. No, coming from committee, no second required. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
We just need a vote on that.
That's right. Okay. Roll call, please, sir.
Counsel Cal. Yes. Counsel Sanford.
Yes.
Counsel Moncorry.
Yes.
Counsel Verone.
Yes.
Counsel O'Terry.
Yes.
Counsel Boyajin.
Yes.
Counsel Delvento.
Yes.
Vice President Mayo.
Yes.
President Gill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Delvento.
From Finance Committee, I move that, move that the town council transfer $24,000 from Town Council Reserve Account 0111052576100 to Town Manager Contract Services Account 0111252544350, for the purpose of funding little services, or take any other action relative there to...
Coming from committee, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus. Are you all set?
Yes.
That's good to me. Okay, very good. Just under old business, two meetings ago, we established the ordinance review committee, and I just needed to have some more applicants for that. So Denise, if you could post that. And we'll close the applications a week from today, and hopefully vote in the committee two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks.
I mean, we'll close it two weeks from tonight, two weeks from yesterday, because we need 14 days. Any other new business, any other old business? If not, we move on.
Counsel President?
Yes.
Did we have a number of people volunteer for that?
I have, I, there's a total of nine, and I believe I have six or seven.
Thank you.
I just have a question for the, the two chiefs regarding, you know, the winter parking and the lack thereof in the whole bit. There's a, you know, constituent, well, actually, not in my precinct, but sent out an email, and there's an area on River Road from, and I have the actual address on River Road, from the last house to, say, where the Episcopal Church is, where the cemetery is there. Is there any possibility, you know, with TSAC, of adding any spots, you know, winter parking spots? You know how we added spots?
I just wanted to go back and look. I think we added that.
We did.
On the right-hand side last year.
Did we?
We did.
If I remember correctly, I just want to check that. Did I necessarily look at it?
Do we know? Okay, great.
Yep, absolutely.
There may be no further old business. Moving on to new business. We have a motion to... You have that motion, Mr. McKenna? The transfer of $45,000.
The motion.
I have it here somewhere. Keep going. I got a... Motion that the town council transfer $45,000 from the Town Manager Salary Reserve Line 0111252-511109 to the Fire Department Personnel Line 0122051-511100, for the purpose of settling fiscal year '15 labor contracts, and take any action relative there to... Do you want to speak to that, Mr. McKenna?
Yes, we're in the process of finalizing our collective bargaining agreements. And this is the amount that we anticipate necessary to fund the balance of this fiscal year for the fire department.
Okay, so could we have a motion?
Motion to refer to Finance.
Motion referred to Finance. Motion by Counsel Moncorry, seconded by Counsel O'Terry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have a motion that the town council transfer $29,791 for the Harbor Enterprise Fund 752 to fund change artists of every human, or take any other action relative there to... Do we have a...
Motion to refer.
To, to finance. Motion to refer to Rule to Finance, the transfer of $29,791 by Counsel Moncorry, seconded by Counsel Boyajin. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those opposed, say no. It's a unanimous vote. Motion by the town manager that the town council refer the Siemens Streetlight Commission, Streetlight Audit Contract to Rules and Ordinance Committee. Comment on that, please?
Yes, because it would, if we do not exercise our rights under the agreement, we would then have to incur an expense relative to that agreement. Since that's the authority of the council and not the manager, I need the council to provide consent to this agreement, so that...
Okay, so we're not violating your role as the appropriating authority. Do we need to refer it to rules, or can we beg...
I would refer it to rules, and we can discuss it.
Okay.
Shall we get a copy of...
Yeah. Okay. Motion by Counsel O'Terry to refer to rules, seconded by Counsel Sanford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Janamus. Thank you.
Would you put that on the agenda, please, for the 24th, please?
Public comment. Public relations is a repeat that the Music Matters fundraiser has been moved to March 13th, Friday, the 13th of March. And I have no other public relations, or upcoming events, I should say. Moving to executive session, the council anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiation and litigation. Discussion of these matters in an open session could have a detrimental effect on the negotiation and litigation process. The matters need to be discussed, a contract negotiation update, and litigation update. The council will return to re, to open session for adjournment only. Could I have a motion to enter executive session? Motion by Counsel Sanford, seconded by Counsel, Counsel Akers, President Mayo. Any discussion on the motion? If not, can we have a rule?
Counsel Cal.
Yes.
Counsel Sanford.
Yes.
Counsel Moncorry.
Yes.
Counsel Verone.
Yes.
Counsel O'Terry.
Yes.
Counsel Boyajin.
Yes.
Counsel Delvento.
Yep.
Vice President Mayo.
Yes.
President Gill.
Yes.
Mike, I would say you don't have to...